We're coming back from our recess. And I realized that we didn't really explain why it was such a long break. We had originally six candidates that were scheduled. And they were all scheduled for different times. And we had one candidate decide to withdraw. And rather than try and shift everybody around, we wound up with a longer break. That's why it was such a long break. But now we're back and we're ready to recommence with the next candidate. And so I will turn it back over to you, Temper.
Thank you. Is Joseph Raker on? I don't see him yet.
I don't see him yet.
Oh, we're a little early for him, aren't we?
Yeah, about four minutes early.
Oops. Were you trying to say something, Jane?
So, all right, this would be inconsistent, but the question that I am really missing in this is, hey, tell us about a really challenging situation, a very difficult problem, and how you resolved it and moved it to a good outcome. It feels like it's a question that's missing in this. But if we start asking it now, we're going to have Mr. First Two candidates answer.
Yeah, I don't think we can modify our list of questions at this point.
No. Okay.
But that would have been a good one.
And that might be good for a second round. If we were due to a second round, we'll add another.
Right. Yeah.
So as soon as Mr., is it Raker?
I think it's Raker.
Raker. As soon as Mr. Raker appears, we can move on. He's probably trying not to jump on someone else's timer. Oops, we lost somebody. No, there's two there.
No, I just turned on camera.
Oops, I was trying to call.
Okay, here's Joe. I will bring him in. Right on the button. And Joe, I'll bring you in so you can rejoin as panelist and turn on your camera.
Good evening, Joe. Can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. I am pleased to introduce Joe Raker III to the board. Joe, before we get started with some interview questions, could you talk about yourself? Tell us a little bit about yourself for about two to three minutes.
Sure. Good evening. Trustees, thank you for having me. I consider myself a lifelong civil servant, whether it's been joining the Navy to enlist and earn a GI Bill, to running for elected office, or serving in the capacity of an appointed administrator. So for the last, I would say, probably thirty-two years almost, I've been involved in civic, public service my, basically my entire adult life.
Thank you. I will now call on the board members in alphabetical order to ask previously agreed upon questions. And we will go through the questions until 7:35. And then we will allow five minutes for you to ask any questions that you may have of the board. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. First question, trustee Corteau.
Good evening, Mr. Raker. Welcome and thank you for joining us. What is your communication style? And how will it ensure that there is a free flow of information from department leaders to the Board of Trustees?
Well, first, let me start off by explaining that I do not have the experience in township government. So my understanding would be that in this position, I would, that the department heads would answer to me. I would be working with the elected officials and the rest of the board to effectuate the desired outcomes for those departments. What I've done in the past in my previous place of employment is I had, I refer to affectionately as the "in the loop", which was a weekly email that I would provide to the board, basically just explaining anything substantive that occurred and is relative to board business. If there was something more emergent, I would send a text message to members of the board, not all at once, just to make sure I don't violate any OMA requirements. And I would ask you then to immediately check your email. Or if it was of an absolute emergent situation, I would call individual board members directly.
Thank you. Clerk Flintoff?
Mr. Raker, thanks for being here. Please describe your leadership style and how you will support the different departments of the township.
Okay, yes, I believe my leadership style is inclusive. I try to build consensus. I try to create and provoke creative dialogue, challenge colleagues and subordinates to, you know, not only have a goal, but have a stretch goal, but also be realistic. So inclusive, cooperative, firm, fair, forthright. I think all those things would characterize my leadership style. I'm not afraid to make a decision. I don't want you to think that, hey, Joe's got a, Joe can't stand on his own two feet. You can definitely do that. The goal would be to create an atmosphere where, you know, a win is shared by all. And, you know, if there's a failure, then I owe everyone an explanation and take that responsibility.
Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway?
How should human resources tactics be used to develop, support, and recognize township staff?
Well, just that right there. Being very new, as far as actually being very ignorant of silo township in general, I'm a firm believer that if you invest in your employees, you're going to get the most out of them. You know, just in basically what you said, the development, the support, and the recognition. Those are, those are some of the key tenants of human resources, period. So taking the time to address anyone's shortcomings, come up with a corrective action plan with timeline and milestones, and also knowing your staff, getting to know them over time sincerely, so that you're aware of any personal or professional challenges that they may be enduring. And if they have a certain confidence level, that they can share with you anything of a personal nature that you may be able to help mitigate for them in the work environment. So that development and supporting them, and then also in recognizing them. You guys do that to some extent in your newsletter. I saw that you were recognizing the new hire and then also departing employee as well.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome?
Good evening. How would you define performance metrics for township government?
Okay, well, obviously the financial, maintaining a financial standing is always important. Identifying what I may, actually, it should be a collaboration, I would think, between, you know, not just what I think would be metrics, performance metrics, but also what the elected officials, and also consultation with organizations like the MML and SenCon, just to ensure that we're looking at the right things and we're measuring the right things to ensure that the performance of township is effective and efficient.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
Welcome. Could you describe the role of a township administrator and how it works with the Board of Trustees?
Well, actually, I will be candid and honest with you. I'm not 100% in understanding of what the role will be. My understanding is somewhat under, I won't say development, but I did go out and talk to some individuals on the ground there in the township. And I am aware that there are various, I don't want to say this disrespectfully, but there's, there's some camps or divisions or opinions on the board that are differing. And my understanding is, and I'm encouraged by this, is that bringing this position back is a hopeful way to kind of bridge those gaps and hopefully bring together the energy that everyone wants to move in the right direction. It's just a matter of getting there. So I understand that there may be some differing points of view, but I can't imagine that it's much far off from that of a city manager or that of a chief operating officer, where, you know, I'm responsible to assist all the departments and work towards the goals of the elected body.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Treasurer Palmer?
Describe, excuse me, describe your level of experience with finance and accounting, in particular for project budgeting.
Ma'am, I'll admit, when it comes to finance, that is not my strongest suit. And so I compensate that by working extra hard, by being extra diligent, and by over-communicating with the finance department to ensure that we are on time, on budget, and that we are on track to reach whatever financial goals we are aspiring to meet. So I can't sit here and say that I have a finance background, other than I probably have reputation for over-communicating with finance department.
Thank you. Trustee Vogel?
So, how would you handle a situation where you are giving, you are given conflicting advice from two different board members?
Hmm, interesting. So every situation is different. I'd have to, there's a lot of context that's lacking in that situation. But I think it's important, if it was in regards to someone's particular agenda, I would ask that that be brought before the full board. If it was something that, you know, both members felt passionate about, I'd say, you know, this is something that needs to be discussed with your colleagues. It's not something that I want to take one side or the other, unless, of course, it was, you know, something glaringly obvious where I could produce, you know, something to better inform the council member, one way or the other, on either side. But if it was something that was, you know, subjective, then I would encourage both to bring it forward to the board for discussion. Or if I really thought that, hey, this really is maybe kind of trivial and not a matter that needs to be brought before the council, I mean, before the board, I would also point that out and provide some justification for that as well.
Thank you. Trustee Corteau?
What would your process be to identify and apply for grants?
I'm just writing it down so that I, yes. Well, again, being new to township government, and from what I understand and observe, silo is in a pretty good place financially. And you have a lot of participants and civic involvement from your constituents. So I'm not sure how, as far as, I, my background has usually been, you know, from communities that are challenged financially, I think financially in, from a neighborhood or in property value perspective. So I've kind of pursued grants that were distressed cities grants. So knowing, you know, that was the market of grants that I was, that were readily available to me and that I could pursue. So I have a level of ignorance when it comes to what your priorities would be. But I do believe that there would be grants out there. I know one of you has an affection for preservation of open spaces and farmlands. And so there's probably specific grants through various federal agencies that we could pursue in that regard. But understanding what the priorities of the council members would be, I believe I could easily locate potential grant funding sources that we could pursue and bring it to the level of the board's attention and get your input as far as the direction you'd like to take on pursuing opportunities like that.
Thank you. Clerk Flintoff?
So how would you bring together a strong staff, an engaged community, and a talented Board of Trustees?
Strong staff. Give me the other two again, I'm writing down.
Engaged community and talented Board of Trustees. That's us.
Talented and modest.
Right.
Your employees are modest, too, because they were the strong suit of the township when I asked the question. So, I mean, that's, that's a great challenge to have. So you have a strong staff, an engaged community, and a talented board. Obviously, everyone has a professional mindset, I would like to think. And bringing that, I think, to the forefront, bringing people together would have to be like, you know, a reminder of why we're all doing what we're doing. I mean, even though I'm aware that there may be some divisions on the board, at the end of the day, you guys decided to serve your community for a reason. And I'm sure it was, you know, benevolent in nature. And I think that's what everyone does when it comes to community service. And so I think creating a culture where, hey, the end game is, you know, moving the community in a positive direction. It's not any one person or any one group of people digging in their heels, you know, and fighting to the death on any one issue. It's a matter of trying to create an environment where, hey, we see the progress that's being made towards the objectives that we've established collectively. And any progress is a win. And it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, sometimes you'll move in inches and sometimes you may move in miles. But, you know, keeping that reminding, setting the culture, and also reminding those stakeholders, you know, what we are attempting to do. And letting everyone know it's okay to compromise. In fact, it's a requirement almost in this line of work.
Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway?
Describe your ability to multitask and to follow through on complicated issues.
Yeah, so, you know, being a city manager, especially in working in distressed cities and working in the city of Detroit through the bankruptcy, before the bankruptcy, through the bankruptcy, and after bankruptcy, and then working as a city manager in Harper Woods. You know, every day is kind of a new set of emergencies almost. Whether it is somebody at the window paying a bill, a water bill, taxes, whatnot, or it is a short timeline on an opportunity that was just short-fused, opportunity brought to our attention. It's constantly prioritizing, you know, what is important, long-term, short-term. And it constantly changes. And so having the ability to create an environment where people understand your vision, where you want to go, not just you, but the board collectively, and people understand what the priorities are for maybe the day, the month, the day, the week, the month, what those challenges may be, and facilitating the opportunity for departments, employees to kind of cross, not necessarily cross-train, to have a cross-awareness of everything that's going on. It allows you to constantly, you know, reshuffling the deck on priorities as those priorities change and as time goes by and as resources either become available or are having to be redirected in other directions. So it's a, it's a, it's a constant management task to just basically stay on task management. Task management in and of itself is a priority. And so it's a daily thing. Some days are more busier than others. But having those, having some structure, having the priorities from the board, kind of drives all of it. And having that communication and feedback to the board helps make adjustments along the way.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome?
How do you adjust your communication with different audiences that you encounter?
Sarah, I heard something about audiences and communications. The rest was chopped up.
Sorry. How do you adjust your communication style for different audiences that you encounter?
Yeah, I think asking questions to ensure that they are understood, like, hey, is what I'm saying to you makes sense? Do you understand what I'm saying? You know, putting out the disclaimer, pardon me, I don't, I don't, I don't know my audience. So if I'm talking above your head or below your head, please let me know so that I can adjust accordingly. I think just having that candid approach to having a quality communication with people, I think, you know, actually starts building the rapport right then and there. So some people might say, hey, listen, Joe, I got that, you know, you know, speed it up. Or some people might say, hey, you're talking over my head. But allowing them to have that feedback immediately, I think, starts building that rapport and establishing good communication.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
How would you get involved and engaged in a new community?
Well, one of the first things that I would do is I would sit down with each one of the members of the board and actually get an idea of who you feel I should be talking to and what are your priorities as far as stakeholders in the community? And give me a timeline of who, on what, and by what time to engage individuals. So, I mean, I would be definitely a stranger in a strange land, and I'm a pretty outgoing person. So I would be relying totally on the elected officials and the staff to point me in the right direction, to get to know folks, stakeholders, and what's important to them and what can be done to move the township in the direction where it wants to go.
Thank you. Treasurer Palmer?
What types of projects have you worked on in the past? And what were the outcomes that they brought about?
Okay, so a couple of notables in the city of Detroit. I worked with the city council and the mayor's office to make Detroit a Purple Heart City. That was, as a veteran myself, that was something that I felt was a positive. And it was, it kind of crossed, you got nine council members to deal with, plus the administration with the mayor's office. So educating everybody on that, making sure that everyone benefits, you know, and the recognition from it, not just one or two people. So that was some social engineering and political navigating there. Another one was working with the city of Detroit, the Wayne, the Joint Building Authority, Detroit Wayne County Joint Building Authority, and the city of Detroit City Council to establish a Veterans Memorial Wall in the Coleman &amp; Young Municipal Center. If you go in there ever for court on county side, there are roughly, there are two roughly 30-foot-long-by-five-foot display cases that basically pay tribute to the historical contributions of Detroiters to include minority units and the contributions of historic Fort Wayne and all the Medal of Honor recipients. In Harper Woods, I oversaw and led $1.3 million upgrades to the city asset, city buildings, DVW and City Hall. And then also in 2020, I established, working with department heads for the first time in probably six or seven years, the department heads had major input on the 2020 budget. There were a lot of capital assets that did not, that needed to be replaced. And it forced the rationalization that we did through the general fund by, to the tune of roughly $400,000 to, you know, that was, had to be done to ensure the continuation of successful city services to our residents. So I would say those four projects are most notable, that stick out to me.
Thank you. Trustee Vogel?
So how would you stay up to date on best practices in local government?
Okay, so I do that, I do this best I can by participating in professional development, whether it be through the MME and the MML. Also here in Macomb County, there was a local city manager that established a regional kind of city managers' association. We'd meet monthly and have professional development topics as well. Another thing that I think helps is, you know, learning, is being a teacher. So having a, pardon me, an internship program. You know, you have students right from the classroom that are bringing, you know, the latest scholastic approaches to things into the actual, into the workforce. So I would, I've used that in the past as well.
Thank you. Trustee Corteau?
What is your experience preparing, reviewing, and executing contracts?
Well, I will say this. I will read them, I will question them, but I always have an attorney look at them and review them and make sure that they are legally sound and there's no exposure for the municipality before they go before council or before they go before the board, pardon me. So as far as drafting them, I've worked in concert with So, as far as drafting them, I've worked in concert with the city attorney to provide the correct language to get where we want to go, but I lean heavily on a legal opinion when it comes to contracts and contract execution.
Thank you. Clerk Flintoff.
If you were selected as the township administrator, what would your first 90 days look like?
I'd go back to sitting down with each one of you, identifying who stakeholders are, and reaching out to them in this environment and find out what is the best way they're most comfortable, you know, starting to build a rapport with me on behalf of the township. And so, I'd do that, and also sit down with all of the department heads, and then also, I would like to, you know, get to meet all of the employees, and I don't think it's, the employee base is so large that I couldn't have a one-on-one with everybody at some point in time. And, you know, I think that would, that certainly wouldn't take 90 days. I'd also, I'd like to work with the board and identify, hey, what are your goals that you'd like to see me accomplish within, you know, whatever those, after I, you know, sit down with the stakeholders, I can get that behind me, I think, fairly quickly. And then, take it in increments. If you want to see something produced in 90 or 100 days, let's have dialogue and also have the inclusion of staff, because they're the, you know, they're the technical experts in their field, so that we're not being overly aspirational and unrealistic.
Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway.
Please describe your experience partnering with outside consultants to ensure effective service delivery.
Okay, one second. Okay, so, in the city of Harper Woods, we use, we consult with, our assessors contracted out, the trash is, trash collection is contracted out, our community and planning, pardon me, our planning and zoning administration is contracted out, and also our code enforcement had a contractor as well. So, a pretty substantive amount of services that were contracted out. Basically, it boils down to contract management and staying on top of what provisions of that contract is. You can't just, you know, sign over the services, sign up for these services and just let them run with it. You have to make sure that you're being vigilant. Establishing a rapport with all these individual contractors is important, that you know who to call when you have an issue. And hopefully, you can call them in a timely fashion, so whatever that issue is, it's not exacerbated. So, knowing who your contractors are, knowing and knowing your contract, and having that rapport are important.
And thank you. Trustee Jerome.
I'll turn my camera off, so hopefully I don't break up. What is your experience with applying best practices for improvements in business processes and workflows?
Well, I mean, I got it started, but it didn't go far. I know that's one of the, in the redevelopment, redevelopment-ready communities through the MEDC, that is, doing that self-assessment is one of those, is part of the process of becoming a redevelopment-ready community. So, I can't say that I've accomplished that. It's something that we aspire to, but it was overcome by other events during my tenure. But it's something that I know where I can go and get it, and that, and possibly apply it if it was the board's will inside of township.
Thank you. Trustee Noel.
Challenges do you see the township facing in the coming years?
I, trustee Noel, I can't say that I have any insight on that. I know of SiO Township, because I drove past it all the time going to school, and I was aware of it. It's a beautiful area out there, and it's near in southeast Michigan, which is a priority for me to stay, because of my family. But I can't sit here and say that I know of any challenges that are specifically unique to SiO Township that aren't applicable to other communities as well.
What are some of those challenges, then, that you see?
I mean, finance, you've got growing healthcare costs, you've got growing pension costs, those are probably, you know, two of the biggest issues right there. There is a silver tsunami in public service. People are leaving, no one's coming in. It's not a popular career field, so attracting talent, training talent, that's a challenge. But again, applicable to all the other, just about any other municipality as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Treasurer Palmer.
How would you calm down a contentious situation?
Okay, given, there's a lot of context missing there. I'm a big proponent of, you know, putting time and space between people. It allows, it allows cooler heads prevail, it allows people to reflect on their, you know, their actions or what their motivations are. And it also gives an opportunity for each side to maybe discuss, or counsel, or caucus with other folks, and try and understand, you know, where the others coming from, and maybe consider or reconsider where they need to be going. So, I'm a big believer in putting some space, time, and distance, but we don't forget about coming back and readdressing that. You can't just, like, walk away upset without resolution. You have to provide some resolution at some point in time. And because of emotions or passions, you might not be able to achieve that immediately. But I think also, if I were to be that person to work with the board, you know, having some dialogue and expectations of how we can, you know, navigate these things, and hey, if whatever does come to this, hey, the agreed-upon method is, let's put a pin in this issue, and we're going to come back to it at whatever standardized, established time and date. And that could be a way of, it's not kicking the can down the street, it's agreeing to a method to try and just kind of reorder things so that cooler heads can prevail at a later time, but a later time that is understood. The understanding is, we seek resolution.
Okay, we have one final question from trustee Vogel.
So, can you describe your experience facilitating strategic planning discussions?
Yeah, so, going back to 2019 to establish the 2020 budget, you know, it wasn't necessarily strategic, it was more tactical, because these are things that had to be done, you know, including people in the conversation, including the department heads saying, hey, listen, what do you need for the upcoming year, upcoming quarter, budget amendment, whatever it may be? How do we sustain and how do we improve city services? If it comes to a more broad approach from a long-term strategic planning perspective, it might be wise to bring in an outside source like the, like SEMCOP. And I've done that twice. My understanding is SiO Township is a member of SEMCOP, and so, I've used their services when I was an elected official in Mount Clemens, and also when I was the deputy city manager in Harper Woods. And so, they have great experience facilitating strategic planning sessions, and I think it's a smart use of your membership dues to utilize them.
Thank you, Joe. Now, it's your time to ask any questions that you may have of the board. You have about five minutes.
Sure. To any board member in general, what is your timeline as far as deliberation, as far as wanting to make this decision and having somebody in place?
Well, the next steps are, the firm that Jennifer works with, Amy Sell Talent Firm, they're conducting the search process, they'll gather together all of the input, so these interviews, we're going to, the members of the board of trustees will sort of provide some input to Amy Sell's firm, and that'll be part of the aggregated sort of data. But also, we have, we had the interviews earlier today with the staff, members of the public have an opportunity to weigh in as well. All of that will be pulled together and sort of fed back to the board of trustees. We have our next regular meeting next Tuesday on the 12th, and so, that'll be the first opportunity for the board to sort of deliberate together. It's possible that with all of the input, that we'll be at a point where we can make a decision. It's also possible that we'll choose to have another round, sort of narrow it down to finalists. That's not clear yet, but I think we are trying to move to a decision expeditiously and get someone on board soon.
Sounds good, sounds good. Now, I appreciate the opportunity, I mean, being selected amongst that candidate pool, and the candidates that you have are impressive. And, you know, honestly, speaking with your staff, very sincere professional group of people from the sample pool that I got to interact with, so, I say this respectfully, they're looking to you to make this decision, and with the understanding that this hopefully is going to be the agreed-upon solution, because whatever dynamics are at play there, they're very well aware of it, and they want to see the township move forward. So, I think all stakeholders on the board are going through this, you know, with their most sincere, service-minded approach, and it's just, you have, your employees are paying attention. So, I say that respectfully, and it's for you to keep that in mind as you move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes this candidate, and our next one is scheduled for 7:40.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, we have another, so we have a 10-minute break.
Ten more minutes. Who's next?
Next is David Rowley.
I see that David has joined us. Jennifer?
Is there a loser again?
No, she's here. Maybe she's just off, uh, stepped away for a moment. I'll bring David in, I guess. It's six, 7:40, is that his time?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Jennifer, if you're ready, I can, I see that David's here. Should I bring him in?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, great. David, I'll bring you in. Um, it'll say that you're rejoining as a panelist.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Hi, David.
I am pleased to introduce David Rowley to the board. David, before we begin with the questions, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? Take one or two minutes and, and tell us about yourself.
All right. Um, originally, I'm from Port Huron. Uh, I grew up in the thumb. And, uh, I attended Central Michigan University for, uh, both my bachelor's degree and my master's degree in public administration. And I've spent my, uh, government career, uh, in two, two main locations. One in Worth Township in Sanlaco County. If you're familiar at all with Port Huron, just go straight north to, uh, the Village of Lexington, right on Lake Huron, and, uh, that, that was Worth Township. And then I spent 21 years, uh, with the city of Mount Pleasant. And then, uh, for the last four and a half years, I've been a government and community vitality educator, uh, with Michigan State University Extension. So I've been teaching, uh, government and public policy, uh, good governance, fiscal sustainability, land use, and all those types of things, uh, across, uh, the state of Michigan. And, uh, some of you may recall that a year ago, uh, I was presented twice for the SIO Township Governance Academy. I did a class on property tax and then also, uh, I co-taught and co-presented the class on government ethics.
Thank you. Uh, I am now going to call upon the board members in alphabetical order to ask you previously agreed upon questions.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to go through the questions until, um, 8:25. And that will allow five minutes for you to ask any questions that you might have of the board, okay?
Sure, sure.
All right, the first question, trustee Corto.
Good evening, Mr. Rowley. Welcome and thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you.
What is your communication style? And how will it ensure that there is a free flow of information from department leaders to the Board of Trustees?
Uh, my, my style has always been one of open communication and of, uh, team building, if you will. Uh, if you, if you check at all with any of my colleagues, they will, uh, I'm sure tell you that, um, we, we communicate openly on, on programming, uh, on, um, on different tasks and processes. Um, and provide that information where it needs to go, whether it needs to go to additional, uh, teams for collaboration or in the case of a government, it needs to go to the, uh, to the governing body. Uh, I've always had an open door policy in my, in my years in government and encouraged, uh, any member of the staff to come in and ask questions, provide information. Uh, and I certainly have no problem asking them questions, uh, whoever it may be, uh, to get additional information. So, one, one of an open door policy and, and one where not every person is going to have the answer to every single question. We all learn new things each and every day. And so we want to have that, uh, that open door so that everybody is, is free and comfortable coming in and, and, uh, expressing their opinion and providing information and then sharing it where it needs to go.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Clerk Flintoff?
Mr. Rowley, thanks for being here. Please describe your leadership style and how you will support the different departments of the township.
Uh, my style is one of, uh, participation. I've always, in my career, tried to, uh, lead by example. Uh, it's, it was the old adage that, um, I wouldn't ask anyone to do, uh, to do something that I wouldn't do myself. Uh, and so that is, that is basically my, my style is what that of participation. Uh, I would encourage all departments to follow something similar, you know, this, the, the, the thing is, is that a unit of government is a team. There, we are all here in one place at one time for one purpose, and that is to serve the public, whether, whether it's the elected officials such as yourselves or whether it's the administrator, whether it's the department head, uh, or whether it's the employee. Everyone is there, uh, to serve, to serve the public and provide the best service possible. And so, uh, I, I try and do that by example to show that, uh, if you follow the lead and then you'll, you'll see that we need to, uh, to have that example and serve the public.
Thank you.
Supervisor, oops.
Yeah, sorry.
Supervisor Hathaway.
Thank you. Um, good evening. How, um, how should human resources tactics be used to develop, support, and recognize township staff?
Uh, what I would suggest is that, uh, each, uh, individual position be reviewed for its knowledge, skills, and abilities as to what it currently has. Uh, the world is, is different from many years ago and it's certainly even different than it was pre-COVID. Uh, so we need to take a look at each individual position and see, uh, who currently holds that position, what knowledge, skills, and abilities that they have. And that's not to say that, that there needs to be whole-scale changes. What I, what I'm suggesting is maybe there's a possibility for some collaboration between different positions. Maybe there's some, a possibility of some cross-training. Uh, earlier today, uh, there was the meet and greet and I had the chance to meet with some of your staff. And I asked them one of those questions and that basically was the answer that I got, is that there needs, in their view, there needs to be some cross-training, that if one person is, is off for whatever reason, illness or just vacation, then there may not be a, a fill, a person to fill that other position. So you need some, some, uh, review of each individual job description to see what, where, where there are overlaps and where there are gaps and what positions could possibly still be needed. And, uh, maybe some of those knowledge, skills, and abilities can cross-reference. And also to include those staff people, staff persons in the, in those discussions because they're the ones actually doing the job on the front line. So you want, you want that input and you want that collaboration and that buy-in so that they, uh, uh, know that their, uh, uh, service is, is appreciated.
Okay. Trustee Jerome?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm going to turn my camera off so I don't get, I don't break up. Can you hear me?
Yeah, absolutely.
I can hear you.
No?
Okay. How would you define performance metrics for township governance?
Uh, performance, I would, I would review, you should have a plan at the first, or a plan of work, if you will, at the beginning of the year, uh, for each individual position. And then at, as you go through and you come to your performance evaluation at the end, uh, review that in terms of what was the expectation. Uh, if you, if you were planning to do three or four different specific projects, and, and again, this is in addition to, to daily assignments. But if you're planning to do three or four individual projects, were you successful in accomplishing those? And if not, what was the obstacle? Was it something that was not foreseeable and should have had a contingency plan in place? Or was there something that clearly was foreseeable and it just got overlooked, uh, in, in the, in the overall analysis? So you really should have a, uh, an implementation plan in place for each position and each, in each task, each job of work, uh, and then a defined, uh, evaluation at the end to see what went well and what can be improved on going forward.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you describe the role of a township administrator and how it works with the Board of Trustees?
Uh, the Board of Trustees is the governing body. Uh, the Board of Trustees, as you well know, is, uh, the, the, uh, entity that's selected by the people. So the, uh, policy decisions are implemented or are made by, by the Board of Trustees. The job of the administrator, uh, in, in, in my view, as I see it, is, is similar to that of the, the city manager versus the city council. That, uh, the direction is given from the, the overall direction is given from the board as the policy. And then the manager implements that policy on a daily basis. Uh, and then works with the various departments, uh, and staff to, to, uh, have additional goals at the department level and staff level to implement the broad overview goals of, uh, of the governing body, in essence, the, the township board. So it's, it's the, the day-to-day management, uh, of the organization with the individual staff persons, the individual departments, and then, and then reporting back on the periodic basis, whether that's bi-weekly or monthly or quarterly, whatever, whatever is appropriate for the township needs, uh, as to the status and, uh, the process that, uh, that is being, uh, followed, uh, with that overall direction from the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Treasurer Palmer?
Describe your level of experience with finance and accounting, in particular for project budgeting.
Mm-hmm. Um, in the city of Mount Pleasant, uh, I, I prepared, uh, 21 different budgets. Uh, now granted, I didn't do all that by myself. There were many other people involved in it. But, uh, uh, with 21 different budgets, um, I provided, uh, the revenue projections every year for the city treasurer, uh, when it came to, uh, to property tax. Uh, we also examined the various, uh, other, uh, revenue streams that were coming in. Um, we reviewed the, um, uh, user fees on an annual basis. And also the budget cycle, uh, that I'm familiar with, uh, was on a calendar year. I know some units of government on a fiscal year, uh, but our, our calendar, uh, we were on a calendar year. And so each, um, each spring, there was a budget proposal, a budget request that was put together. And then that was submitted to, uh, to the city manager and then we had individual reviews of that. We had to justify each one of the expenses in the individual, uh, line items in the budget. Uh, we had, uh, the authority to spend individually once it was, the budget was approved. Uh, but individually up to a thousand, I'm sorry, up to $5,000, uh, uh, again, with line items that were already approved. Um, there were two budget amendment processes. One was in July and one was in December. So one, in essence, to coincide with the summer tax bill collection and one to coincide with the winter tax bill collection. Uh, so that's, that's the normal traditional budget process. If you had a specific project that you were working on, there were no individual departmental, uh, fund balances. The fund balance was done at the city level so that, uh, if you had savings at the end of the year, that those funds went back into the overall general fund. Uh, and in, in my 21 years, we always had a surplus at the end. Uh, we were either, we were either totally in balance or we had a surplus. We did not run a deficit. If you had a project, uh, that did require crossing over that threshold of the end of the year, then you could make that request in the budget cycle to say that, um, uh, the example that, that I recall most vividly was that there was a, to be purchased, uh, six computers. And those are all budgeted for, all approved. All six were ordered well in advance of the end of the year. Uh, but by December 15th, only three had arrived. They were back-ordered for some reason. And so the other three were asked to be carried over to the following year. In that particular example, the line item was adjusted so there was a departmental fund balance for those three computers for that one year, for that one example. So it was simply a, a carryover. And that, and you've got to have a little bit of flexibility like that. But there needs to be, uh, uh, precise rules for the budget and the timeline for the budget needs to be followed and implemented so that the board can make its decision in a timely manner.
Thank you. Trustee Vogel?
That would be me. Uh, so, how would you handle a situation where you were giving, where you were given conflicting, uh, guidance from two board members?
Ah, okay. Basically, yes.
Let me just add, are you guys picking up the background noise from here? I realize my husband just started working in his shop in the basement. Are you picking up any of that?
No.
No.
Nope.
Good. Just checking.
Uh, basically what I, what I would do if there's a project in place and both, and two, and two members of the board approach me and give, give opinion or give advice or, or information that is conflicting, uh, then I would, uh, go back to each one of them individually and ask, you know, what is the basis of your information because I perceive additional information that seems to, uh, be different than what I've heard before? So did I misunderstand what you were advising me? Or is there a possibility that there's additional information that you may not have? Uh, if that doesn't work with both board members, then I would ask to have a, a meeting with both and just have a conversation. It's like, we, we need to be on the same page and it appears that in this particular example, we're not. So let's, let's discover what it is, uh, that, uh, it was misunderstood, uh, or misstated, however it happened. Uh, it's not a situation of, of blaming anybody. It's not like that. It's just, we all need to be on the same page going forward with whatever the project is. So we, we, we need that good communication. And if it can't be done individually, then we get the, all the parties involved in the same place at the same time and have that conversation.
Thank you. Trustee Corto?
What would your process be to identify and apply for grants?
Um, there's many different agencies out there. Uh, some are at the state level and some are at the federal level. First, we would need to identify what is the topic that we're looking for. What, what, what is the, um, uh, subject matter that we're trying to address? And then, uh, investigate the various state and, uh, and local, I'm sorry, the state and federal grant opportunities that are there. I know there's websites that are out there. Uh, and I also have colleagues that I can contact as well, uh, for additional specific information. As a matter of fact, uh, I was asked a question about two weeks ago by a city manager up in northern Michigan about, uh, tourism grants. And so, uh, I was able to solicit that information, uh, from a colleague and also from the state of Michigan and be able to provide, uh, uh, resources to that particular individual, uh, on grants for, uh, for the, the tourism topic that they were trying to find. So state, uh, state, uh, agencies are a great place. Uh, there's also foundations that may have info, or I'm sorry, may have grant money that's available. Uh, you have to look at the subject matter, uh, because not all subjects are going to be the same. Not all, uh, uh, agencies are going to provide, uh, universal grants. You've got to be a little bit specific in, in, uh, the search. Uh, but a lot of state agencies and foundations would be a good, a good place to begin that.
Burke Flintoff?
How would you bring together a strong staff, an engaged community, and a talented Board of Trustees?
Uh, good open communication. Um, I think, again, if you ask my colleagues, they will tell you that, uh, I will, I'll be right up front with, with, with anyone I speak to as to what is the, what is the subject, what is the question? I spent my entire career, uh, in local government and in 25 years, I can guarantee you that there have been times when some people were not happy. And so it's just a question that, as uh, the example that, that I recall most vividly was that there was a, to be purchased, uh, six computers. And those are all budgeted for, all approved. All six were ordered well in advance of the end of the year. Uh, but by December fifteenth, only three had arrived. They were backordered for some reason. And so the other three were asked to be carried over to the following year. In that particular example, the line item was adjusted, so there was a departmental fund balance for those three computers for that one year, for that one example. Uh, so it was simply a, a carryover. And that, and you've got to have a little bit of flexibility like that. But there needs to be, uh, uh, precise rules for the budget and the timeline for the budget needs to be followed and implemented. So that the board can make its decision in a timely manner.
Thank you. Trustee Vogel.
That would be me. Uh, so how would you handle a situation where you were giving, where you were given conflicting, uh, guidance from two board members?
Ah, okay. Basically, yes.
Let me just add, are you guys picking up the background noise from here? I realize my husband just started working in his shop in the basement. Are you picking up any of that?
No.
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 Good. Just checking.
Uh, basically what I, what I would do if there's a project in place and both, and two, and two members of the board approach me and give, give opinion or give advice or, or information that is conflicting. Uh, then I would, uh, go back to each one of them individually and ask, you know, what is the basis of your information? Because I perceive additional information that seems to, uh, be different than what I've heard before. So did I misunderstand what you were advising me? Or is there possibility that there's additional information that you may not have? Uh, if that doesn't work with both board members, then I would ask to have a, a meeting with both and just have a conversation. It's like, we, we need to be on the same page. And it appears that in this particular example, we're not. So let's, let's discover what it is, uh, that, uh, it was misunderstood, uh, or misstated, however it happened. Uh, it's not a situation of, of blaming anybody. It's not like that. It's just, we all need to be on the same page going forward with whatever the project is. So we, we, we need that good communication. And if it can't be done individually, then we get the, all the parties involved in the same place at the same time and have that conversation.
Thank you. Trustee Corto.
What would your process be to identify and apply for grants?
Um, there's many different agencies out there. Uh, some are at the state level and some are at the federal level. First, we would need to identify what is the topic that we're looking for. What, what, what is the, um, uh, subject matter that we're trying to address? And then, uh, investigate the various state and, uh, and local, I'm sorry, the state and federal grant opportunities that are there. I know there's websites that are out there. Uh, and I also have colleagues that I can contact as well, uh, for additional specific information. As a matter of fact, uh, I was asked a question about two weeks ago uh, by a city manager up in northern Michigan about, uh, tourism grants. And so, uh, I was able to solicit that information, uh, from a colleague and also from the state of Michigan and be able to provide, uh, uh, resources to that particular individual, uh, on grants for, uh, for the, the tourism topic that they were trying to find. So state, uh, state, uh, agencies are a great place. Uh, there's also foundations that may have info, or I'm sorry, may have grant money that's available. Uh, you have to look at the subject matter, uh, because not all subjects are going to be the same. Not all a, uh, agencies are going to provide, uh, universal grants. You've got to be a little bit specific in, in, uh, the search. Uh, but a lot of state agencies and foundations would be a good, uh, good place to begin that.
Burke Flinthoff.
How would you bring together a strong staff, an engaged community, and a talented Board of Trustees?
Uh, good open communication. Um, I think, again, if you ask my colleagues, they will tell you that, uh, I will, I'll be right up front with, with, with anyone I speak to as to what is the, what is the subject, what is the question? Uh, I spent, I spent my entire career, uh, in local government. And in twenty-five years, I can guarantee you that there have been times when some people were not happy. And so it's just a question that, as you go into local government, you have to understand that no matter what you do, no matter how well you do it, no matter how well you document it, and no, and no matter how well and how correct the answer is, somebody's not going to like it. So you have to make sure that everyone is treated, uh, honestly and fairly, and that communication is there. And above all, that everyone in the process has the opportunity to be heard and know that they have been heard. Uh, and I'll just share with you one, one example real quick. Is there was a gentleman in the township that I worked in, in Worth, that, uh, two of the township, uh, board members did not even want to speak with. As a matter of fact, would leave the room whenever he walked in. And he finally, uh, cornered me out in the parking lot as I was leaving one day and expressed his opinion. And I, and, and said it, and it was a, it was a tax issue. And I investigated it and discovered that he was correct. And he came in and his tune had totally changed. He was no longer belligerent. He was no longer confrontational. And those two board members asked, what happened? And I said, he was correct. We needed to listen to him. And we solved his problem and he was a great supporter of the township after that. But everyone needs to be heard and everyone has the right to be heard. Uh, and bring tho, bring all those views together. There, people are going to disagree. That's just the nature, the nature of government. Uh, and so you want to make sure that, that disagreement is done in the, in a productive manner, which isn't always possible at the state and federal level anymore. But hopefully, uh, we can do that at, at a local level.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway.
Describe your ability to multitask and to follow through on complicated issues.
Uh, in, in my career, the, uh, the whole idea of, uh, having mul, multiple tasks going on, it wa, is, was normal. So basically you have to keep your calendars current and you have to keep, uh, your project, uh, your project list going. In, in other words, uh, each task is going to have a, a set of goals and objectives. It's going to have an implementation plan. It's going to have an evaluation, uh, schedule. Uh, and it's going to have different timetables. And so you want to keep, uh, keep those, uh, individually, uh, these individual projects running. Uh, you may need additional, uh, briefing book kind of materials, depending on the nature of the, of the project, how complicated it may be. Other ones could simply be, uh, a file folder with a couple of, uh, sheets of paper in it. But you want that information to be readily available and you want to track it on a, on a weekly basis. Uh, so that you're keeping each one, each one of the projects in place. Uh, and you, you, the biggest issue is, uh, that I've seen in my career is people do not keep their calendars up to date. They'll, they'll inadvertently miss something. Uh, we had a project in Mount Pleasant with an outside consultant. And we had like thirty-five city employees sitting waiting in the room and the consultant never showed up. And, uh, that was the, that was an issue. When the consultant finally did contact the city, the answer was, well, I, I didn't have it on the main calendar. I had it on a subsequent calendar. It's like, well, you have to keep your calendars current. You've got to keep your projects on, on task and moving forward. Because in that example, we had thirty-five people that wasted probably an hour of their day waiting for this person to show up. Uh, so, uh, a plan, a, uh, a definitive plan and also some redundancy. Don't just keep it electronically. Electronic documents fail. I'm, I'm old school. I still maintain a paper calendar as well. So I actually have two. I have both. I have both. I've had too many things fall off my electronic calendar, so I keep both.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome.
Um, how do you adjust your communication style for different audiences?
Uh, try and determine if you can ahead of time. Uh, what is the nature of the audience that you're going to, uh, present to? Um, I've, I've made numerous presentations over, over my career. And that is one thing is that, that depending on the nature of the, of the topic and the nature of the audience, you want to present it to a level that is going to be useful for them. Uh, you don't want it to be too basic, uh, certainly because you're certainly not trying to offend someone. But on the same token, you don't want it to be over, over their heads so that they're not understanding what it is that you're trying to say. So whatever the presentation is, you need to, you need to determine ahead of time the subject matter. Uh, and also the, 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 the most probable audience that you're going to have so that, that, uh, information is, uh, presentable. Uh, because you can have a disaster if it's not. I'll give you one quick example. Uh, in extension, we developed a program at a county's request. I will not say which county, but at a county's request. And we were told at, by the county, keep it, keep it basic. This is one oh one. This is one oh one. This is, this is the introductory version of the topic. So we did that. Our reviews were horrendously bad because the county had told the audience that this was the master's thesis program. Because they got the information from two different people. We were being told the introductory version and the audience was being told by someone else that this is the graduate school version. And so our, our reviews were just ripped to shreds for, for that. So you want to avoid that. So absolutely learn your audience. And also I learned the hard way that way is also find out who is doing the organizing of the audience to make sure we know what they have told the audience. Not just they've given us a list of, uh, types of people that they're expecting, but we need to know from them, uh, what was the audience told ahead of time to expect. So com, that communication is key. It still goes back to that.
Trustee Noel.
How would you get involved and engaged with the new community?
Um, that's an interesting question. Um, for one, um, it's been a long time, to be, to be honest, it's been a long time since I've been down in that, that particular part of the state. So, um, uh, I would, I would want to, um, uh, at first, and if nothing else, uh, drive around the township and just see exactly what is here. Uh, uh, townships are all going to be a little different. Some things are going to be similar. Uh, I know that I've been told, uh, and as I recall, there's some good, uh, large, uh, rural parts of the community, but also you're right next door to Ann Arbor as well. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of urban influence. Uh, so to, to examine the community, uh, go to different shops. Go to different shops, um, you know, take my wife to dinner somewhere. And, uh, just, just, uh, just talk to people, uh, and also just see, uh, how they respond to, to, uh, to each other. Just how does the community react, uh, to itself on a, on a, just on an informal basis? Uh, but the biggest thing is just to, to, to drive through, uh, stop at the gas station, stop at the party store. Uh, just have basic conversation with, with people. Uh, they don't have to, to know uh, that I'm there just trying to, 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 to view that, uh, or gather that information. Um, you know, I'm a tourist as far as they're concerned. Uh, but it's important just to, to see, uh, the types of things. And if the conversation permits, then just ask, uh, people what their views are on different, on different issues. But, uh, uh, a general overview, just take a look at the community and, uh, s, see what stands out.
Thank you.
Treasurer Palmer.
What types of projects have you worked on in the past? And what were the outcomes they brought about?
Probably the biggest project and the longest project was in Mount Pleasant and was actually called Project Two Thousand. Uh, Project Two Thousand began actually, uh, the year before I was hired by the city of Mount Pleasant. Uh, and, uh, lasted until, oh goodness, probably two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So a good, probably fifteen years or so. But, uh, basically Project Two Thousand was, uh, three hundred acre land acquisition by the city. Uh, to be fair, it was land that was annexed from Union Township. And those three hundred acres were then developed into the long, go, long-range vision for the community. Hence the name Project Two Thousand, as the original concept was started in the year of two thousand. And the goal there, or the, the, the end result there was, excuse me, all of that property was developed and placed on the tax rolls for economic development. If you drive through that area today within the city of Mount Pleasant, you will see res, uh, you will see several subdivisions of single-family homes. You'll see condominiums. You will see, uh, um, apartments, multifamily homes, uh, senior citizen, state police post, county health department building, uh, and, uh, a complete industrial park. So all of that, uh, was developed, uh, through the Project Two Thousand case. And lastly, what I will say about that is, one of the reasons it took so long is because when the project was originally started, the state tax commission, the state of Michigan got involved and said that the property, even though it was being held by the city, which is an exempt entity, uh, was not being utilized for a public purpose and therefore was subject to taxation. The city objected and, make a long story short, it took twelve years to go through the courts. Uh, it went through the Board of Review, the Michigan Tax Tribunal, the Court of Appeals, and all the way to the Supreme Court. Uh, and I prepared all the exhibits for the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court at both parties' requests. And, uh, basically we were successful as a community. It was, it was seven to nothing that what the community was doing was a public purpose. So that we have a, we have a Supreme Court decision today that defines what a public purpose is for a community to own and develop land. So it, it, that, that was a huge project and, uh, there was many people involved in that. And, and, uh, uh, I was heavily involved in, in, uh, in parts of it and also certainly in the, uh, in the legal process for it.
Thank you. Trustee Vogel.
So how do you stay up to date on best practices in local government?
Um, I've been fortunate from the standpoint that these last four and a half years I've been with MSU Extension. So, um, I've had colleagues, uh, both in extension and also at the university level, uh, professors that I've been able to ask questions of. Uh, and also they've been team members of ours when we are developing our various programs for county governments, city governments, township governments. And so we've had, I've been fortunate, as I say, I've been able to utilize the resources of, uh, of MSU uh, to put all of those, uh, all of that information in place, uh, and to keep current with it. Uh, in the event of, you know, moving on to, uh, to the township, uh, I'd still maintain those contacts because, uh, my colleagues are still there. Uh, several colleagues, uh, left the, the organization over the years and they still called me on questions. Uh, so it's certainly, uh, uh, an opportunity to do that. And the other thing is, uh, I have, in my career of twen, over twenty-five years, I have many contacts across the state of Michigan as well with other communities, whether they're city managers or county administrators or township officials that I can ask ideas for and, you know, say, we're, we're looking at this project and we're thinking of doing it this way. What do you think? Does that, does that make any sense? Because there are, are there additional pieces of information that we should consider? So resources and contacts, that's another, another excellent way to, uh, to keep up to date on things like that.
Thank you. Trustee Corto.
What is your experience preparing, reviewing, and executing contracts?
Uh, we had to, uh, uh, contract out for various staff positions and various, uh, uh, projects. So the, uh, uh, city attorney, to be honest, wrote, wrote the actual text of the document. Uh, but, uh, uh, I had to write job descriptions to be included in that. Uh, one, one in particular was a, was a, a position that was going to be filled in my department. So I had to write the job description, uh, and put in place the, the various parameters for that. Uh, and then, uh, submit that information to the, uh, to the attorney. It did come back, uh, for review. Uh, and I did have opportunity to, uh, provide feedback to the attorney on that. Um, and now at, at the township level, um, in Worth, um, it was more of, of reviewing information for the township board. Worth is, is a small township, much, much smaller than, than, uh, than yours here. Uh, and so we had limited resources. And so the township board asked for review of, of many documents, many contracts like that, uh, while I was there. Uh, they wanted, they wanted, there was a five-member board, so all five members reviewed it. Uh, and since, uh, I had, uh, the, the, the college education, for lack of a better way to say it, they wanted my input on it as well. So, um, several contracts and lots of information at the township level and also, uh, at the city level when we're hiring staff and also going out, uh, uh, for individual services.
Burke Flinthoff.
If you were selected as township administrator, what would your first ninety days look like?
First, I would want a comprehensive review of, in essence, what is the state of the township? And what I mean by that is what projects are currently in place? Um, uh, uh, grants, um, you know, water contracts, sewer, you know, what, what, what is the status of all contracts that are pending? What is the status of all projects that are out there? Uh, I'd also want to look at all of the, uh, positions that are in the, in the organization. Uh, who, in essence, who works where? Uh, what departments are fully staffed? What departments are, are understaffed? What's the, uh, job descriptions look like for all of those positions? Uh, how recently have they been done? How recently have they been updated? Uh, is there any chance for some revisions there? Uh, the other thing is the master plan. How old is the master plan? What is the status of that? Now, what, how old is the zoning ordinance? Are there things there that need to be, uh, to, to be updated? Uh, is there a, a future land use map? If not, there should be some consideration given to that going forward. And if it's there, then how old is it? So basically a, a comprehensive review, uh, of each department, uh, each, each position, each contract. Uh, and also I would want to meet, uh, basically with everyone who, who works in the coun, uh, I'm sorry, in the township. Um, uh, each individual person. And I would want to know, uh, from those individuals, from all of them, what do they see the current state of the township as? What do they, in other words, what do they see that works very well? And then also what do they see that we can improve on? This isn't a situation where something's bad. It's just, I don't care what anyone is doing, there's always something that can possibly be improved on. And at least it's important to have that conversation. So that, that's basically a, a state of the township analysis is really, I, I think where, uh, that first thirty to sixty days would be appropriate.
Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway.
Please describe your experience partnering with outside consultants to ensure effective service delivery.
Um, we partnered with, in the city, uh, we partnered with, um, the, um, what's it called? Central Michigan Economic Development Corporation for, uh, marketing of the Project Two Thousand parcels. The city did not do the marketing itself. We, we partnered with, uh, CMC, or the, with Economic Development, Central Michigan Economic Development to, uh, uh, provide the actual, uh, uh, marketing work. Um, we provided the, uh, the guidance and the overall structure for that. Um, one of the projects in particular was the, uh, industrial park. And the, the whole idea with that was the city was, was without industrial land. And so that's where that was developed in the first place. But then it needed to be marketed and, and developed, not just to say that we have industrial land, but we need industrial properties to be on the industrial land. And so, uh, uh, that, that partnership yielded, uh, there were, as I recall off the top of my head, there were twelve parcels that were developed in that. They were each, each parcel was like ten acres in size. And, uh, there were, uh, ten parcels that were, um, uh, completely marketed and sold and developed. Uh, one parcel was set aside for the retention pond, so there was still one vacancy in there. And then subsequently, over the years, those parcels have since, since been subdivided and additional properties in there. But, uh, that partnership for the marketing and sale and development, uh, of the industrial park was, was a, uh, an excellent project, I thought.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome.
Uh, yes. What is your experience with applying best practices for improvements in business processes and workflows?
Um, basically, we, we reviewed, um, the, the work processes, uh, pretty much on an annual basis in the city. And what I mean by that is we would do what was called a pulse check or, uh, um, a snap, snap look. And we would review the, the job descriptions from the standpoint of how quickly did information go from one department to the next? Uh, and what was the turnaround for the processing of various applications? Whether that came from, uh, building and code enforcement, whether that came from downtown development, uh, whether that came from the finance department or the assessor's office or wherever it may be. Uh, the other thing to, to The other thing to look at was to include all of the possible stakeholders in any discussion like that because you could have a situation where you're looking to change something and it's going to impact others in the overall workflow. So we wanted to make sure that we included all the various stakeholders within the city and sometimes outside the city if that was appropriate. But internally, when the city, and one of the examples I'm thinking of is the treasurer's office also supervised utility billing. And they were thinking about, and actually did, change the way in which those bills were calculated and processed. And so they needed to make sure that they had the various stakeholders involved in that so that evaluation could be there and everybody could be, make sure that that workflow was solid and timely across the board.
Thank you. Trustee Noel? Challenges do you see the township facing in the coming years?
The one that you're well aware of, and the one, to be honest, I'm aware of, but I've not had a lot of information in it, I think, is still the contamination. Contamination is a huge, huge issue. We dealt with contamination in Mount Pleasant at the old scrapyard. Certainly not to the level that I'm hearing with the contamination in the township. But still, it was an obstacle to overcome. The property had several environmental studies that was done. It was more widespread at that point, in my experience and what we originally thought. Certainly not to the scale that you're experiencing. But I think contamination is a vital problem. Infrastructure is a vital problem as well: water, sewer, broadband. For one, in all honesty, I've not had the opportunity to review your infrastructure in detail. So you may be in great shape. But my experience across the state is that, yeah, however well the infrastructure is, there's always something that can be updated or something that can be expanded upon. Even if you've got a good broadband, it's changing so rapidly. That might be a way to do it. The one thing that I would say to take advantage of is that if you're looking at any infrastructure, is the ARPA money that's coming. That might be a great opportunity to partner and leverage some of those funds for water or sewer expansion. I'm assuming water is a big issue because of the contamination. So I would think that possibly a water expansion or maybe even more improvement of capacity might be in order.
Thank you. Treasurer Palmer?
How would you calm down a contentious situation?
With an individual?
Either or.
Okay, okay. The biggest issue when you're dealing with an individual who might be a little contentious is just give them some space, but also give them the opportunity to be heard. In my, as I said earlier, in my experience, the individual person, especially a citizen, if they're not feeling that they're being heard, they're not feeling that they're being listened to or they're being taken seriously, that's just going to raise the level of their agitation. And so I've had several people over the course of my career come into my office, and they were very upset at the first. And we had a conversation. I was able to answer their questions. With all due respect to one lady, she kept interrupting me. She asked a question, I start to answer, and then she kept interrupting me. And this went on for like 10 minutes, and I finally, I wasn't saying I was agitated, but I finally was a little bit more forceful and said, "Look, Mrs. Jones, I will answer your question if you allow me the opportunity to answer your question. But if you're not going to allow me that opportunity, then maybe this needs to wait for another day." And once that kind of real, that kind of hit her in the face a little bit from the standpoint, it's like, "Oh, you are trying to answer my question. Nobody else was." And I said, "I am trying to answer it, so can I answer it for you? Because if I'm understanding you correctly, I think you're right, but I can't do that if you won't let me delve into a little bit more." So just that opportunity for communication. You can't take it personally. You've got to have a thick skin if you're going to work in local government. So it's not a personal vendetta. It's not a personal attack. They're upset about something. Something has, especially at the local level, has upset the individual person. And so I want them to be able to know that I will listen to whatever it is they have to say, and I will do my best to solve that particular question. I will also say to that person, at the end of the day, the answer may be no because what you're asking me to do, I'm either unable to do because of policy or worse yet, I'm unable to do because of statute. And that's been the case in several issues as well. The person wanted certain dispensations on things. And it's like, what you're asking us to do violates state law. We cannot do that. I understand your point. I understand it. But here, I can show you the statute that does not allow us to do that. That eased them, that they knew we were not taking them seriously. We were not ignoring them. But there was a state law that they didn't like. And it's like, well, in that case, that conversation needs to be held with your state legislator because I can't change the state law. I'm stuck with it just as you are.
Thank you. We have one final question. Trustee Vogel?
So, our last question is, can you describe your experience facilitating strategic planning discussions?
We've done that for Extension in various counties across the state. And to be fair, that conversation was mostly done for county government as opposed to city or township. But the concepts are the same. So basically, we look at the various mechanisms that are in place for facilitation to build group consensus, team building, there's various exercises that you can do. I would also, in my experience, I've seen the city council in some jurisdictions do retreats where they may go off into a local community, part in the local community somewhere, and have those discussions originally in the morning and then come back with a more detailed facilitation session in the afternoon. And that was really for a goal-setting session. So you can take some of the facilitation techniques of brainstorming and fishboning and all those types of things that are out there. There are jam boards if you want to do it electronically, so you can do things like that. There's also an exercise we've utilized with the Post-it notes, which is kind of an interesting thing, and ranked voting, we've done that as well. So there's a variety of techniques that can be utilized to try and reach some consensus on whatever the topic or the situation may be.
Thank you. Now, David, with our five minutes remaining, you have an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have of the board.
Okay. It's interesting because one of the questions asked of me was a similar one that I had written down for the board itself. So my question basically is, what does the township board see as the number one issue that would need to be addressed by the end of the year? Or by December 31st? Maybe not completely solved totally, but what is the number one priority that should be addressed before the end of the year?
Well, I'll take a stab at it.
Sure.
I think we have a lot of long-term issues that we really need to be paying attention to. Some of them, I think you did a very good job of describing, infrastructure, dealing with the contamination issue, that's an ongoing challenge. But I think, the Board of Trustees, I think, would agree that we need to find a way to, as a government, as an organization, to sort of come together and work together more effectively. So if I was going to say what our top priority is between now and the end of the calendar year, I'd say that that's probably our top priority. How do we, you know, overcome some of the disagreements that we're having and figure out how to work together effectively, you know, as a team?
Mm-hmm. Fair enough, fair enough.
I have one.
Sure. Please.
We've had staff changes, retirements, and these were longtime employees, so we're struggling to move on. We have hired and filled those positions, but there's quite a change that's occurring. So that's a big one, too.
And just to add on to that, I'd say, yeah, internally, I think the two biggest challenges is information management, how to better use the information to improve our business processes and improve our services across the board. And as Donna was saying, we've had a lot of changes. You know, it's just a generational thing almost here that's changing. And so what I find is operationally, we're not speeding up to catch up to the talent that we're bringing in. So with the, we have, in just the last two years, we have a new fire chief, new utilities director, new assessor, and then a few other new staff. Only two long-term board members are treasurer and trustee Noel. I've been clerk since 2019. The supervisor and other three trustees have been here since the fall. So a lot of newness, and I think operationally is where we need to make the most improvement.
Another comment? Yeah.
Sure.
Please.
I'd like to add to that. Actually, I want to just enhance a little bit something Clerk Flinthoft said there. Three of us are new kids on the block in terms of trustees, but we come from pretty deep township experience, whether it was the parks and pathways or the open states or the planning commissions. We have deep experience in sort of the huge strength in the township, which is all of our boards and commissions. But here's an observation I would offer that I think makes a top free list. The township has been without a manager for a good two years. You get this big turnover. There's consequences. I would characterize, we have aspects of the township that have been under managed because we haven't had a manager or administrator. And in this discussion, this phrase you use, kind of state of the township, I think is very appropriate. And I think that could be a good catalyst to us to kind of getting a sense of what's the full scope of what's in front of us? That needs some serious management attention. And I have this sense that if we could just get our arms around it and get a comprehensive look, we would have a great foundation for doing some really great strategic planning.
Sure.
But there's really a need, in my mind, to sort of get our arms around it. So your description, state of the township, I thought was quite insightful.
Oh, that's very helpful. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's always hard when you've lost some institutional memory. And I certainly can understand that. We had that in the city. Employees that had been there for 30, 35 years. I believe, if my memory is right, I think there was four of those that retired all within the same year or within two years. So that's a lot of knowledge that went out the door at one time. And the new people that came in were great people, no question about it. But they can't tell you what happened five years ago because they weren't there. And so that institutional knowledge, that loss is huge in trying to overcome that, you know?
Thank you, David. We are at time.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was my pleasure.
Thank you.
The final candidate is Fred Schnuck.
Yes, and, hold on, I just want to make sure I didn't lose a member of the board. Okay, Fred, I'll bring you in as a panelist. And Fred, you can turn on your camera.
Hi.
Hi, Fred. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great, thank you. I am pleased to introduce Fred Schnuck to the board. Fred, before we get started with the questions, would you please share something about yourself? Tell us a little bit about you for about two minutes.
Well, first, thanks to everybody for staying up so late, and you've had a long day, so I'll try to be short and brief. My background is, I'm a steelworker and a founder man. I grew up in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, was trained in the factories in Milwaukee, went to work making auto parts at the A.O. Smith Corporation, got married, had two kids, and then the bottom fell out of the manufacturing economy in Milwaukee in the early to mid 80s. A story I'm sure Michigan's very familiar with. At that point, my bride said, "Well, you're going back to school." And I looked at my shirt, and I said, "There's no alligator on this shirt. I'm not one of those suit-and-tie-wearing flunkeys. I'm a working man." And she said, "Yeah, you ain't working, so you're going back." I'm serious. My wife deserves every diploma I ever got because she's the one who kept the kids quiet, reviewed all my papers, and made sure that I got through. And I found I really actually had a knack for school. So going at nights, I picked up my associate bachelor's and master's degree in public administration. I'm currently working on my PhD in urban studies at the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee. Along with that, I started a retraining program for 3,000 of us who got laid off at the A.O. Smith Corporation. And what I found over time was, in a few months, those workers were back in my door. So I've been really studying for a long time, how do you spur growth in our communities? And that's really where I've spent most of my time, looking at school and work transition, looking at how do we bring together the disciplines of workforce development, community development, and economic development. I did that up in Ashen, Wisconsin, then, for the 10 northwest counties of the state, where I worked for those 10 northwest counties doing workforce development services. I then ran as the mayor of the city of Ashen. I served as the mayor for four years. I then served as a public administration consultant with FOWTH, where I provided everything from grant writing to ordinance development and comprehensive plan development across the Midwest. Worked for a variety of other nonprofits, and then came to work for the city of Kewahnee about four and a half years ago to help them with their needs. Have two kids. Our kids live over in London, Ontario. So we spend a lot of time in Ann Arbor and Detroit when we visit with our kids. So that's really what interests me about SIO.
All right, thank you. I am now going to call on board members in alphabetical order to ask previously agreed-upon questions. We'll go through the questions until 9:15, and then that will allow you about five minutes to ask any questions that you may have of the board, okay? First question, trustee Courtois?
Good evening, Mr. Schnuck. Welcome, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
What is your communication style? And how will it ensure that there is a free flow of information from department leaders to the Board of Trustees?
Well, I think it needs to be open in government at all times. So I try for a very open communication style. I've always had an open-door policy. I expect elected officials, when they're in City Hall, to stop in and say hello. When I'm out in the community, if I run into elected officials, I'll always stop and say hello. I also expect that from department heads. I put out a weekly, "Here's what's happening" from my desk notice to the department heads and to the elected officials. And then we do a monthly staff report where I combine those reports, and I get those from the department heads and put that out to books. Also, pretty active in the community in a variety of issues, just trying to be present. So I think that's really, really important to have that, especially with all the calls that we're having for... with all the calls that we're having for, you know, transparency, uh, has become the new buzzword. So you, you really have to be open on, on your communication style.
Thank you. Next question, Clerk Flintoff.
Mr. Schnuck, thanks for being here. Please describe your leadership style and how you will support the different departments of the township.
Thanks for that. I, I think there's, there's, again, the, the, the leadership style, I would say, is, is ninety percent of the time, um, I try not to interfere or micromanage department heads. I, I assume we hire good people, I assume they know what they're doing, and they don't need me micromanaging them. But if you're going to have that kind of management style, it goes back to the first question, you better have a lot of communication. Because I need to be hearing from those department heads what they're working on, and they need to be hearing from me as to kind of what the goals and objectives are to make sure we're all pulling in the same direction. That said, there are times when you do have to be hands-on and you do have to micromanage. If you have an employee who's going south, if there's performance objectives that aren't being met, um, then you have to take more active approach. If there is, uh, some kind of an emergency in the community, if a plant closes, if a, uh, there's a natural disaster, there's a flood or, or a tornado, people expect their administrator out there, trooping the lines. And you need to be out there talking to folks, uh, talking to people in the community and making sure that you're available. So I, I guess the short answer to your question is it's situational. My management style really depends on the situation and what it needs, although my default is really to keep things, a nice flow of communication, but not micromanaging folks.
Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway.
Good evening. How should human resources tactics be used to develop, support, and recognize township staff?
That's a really good, uh, question, and it's got multiple parts to it. Uh, let, let, let me bring up a point here that I think is really important for anybody who's involved in municipal government at this point. For folks who haven't been paying attention, we've seen Washington-style politics now that we've had that have been pretty ugly for the last twenty years hit us at the local level, okay? People are leaving this discipline wholesale because they are not feeling protected. So part of what's really important about personnel is ensuring that the employees are safe. And not just the minimal amount of safety to ensure that we're not, you know, abusing women or people of color or the LGBT community. That's the minimum standard. We need to go, uh, up and through that to ensure that people are safe. And what I mean by that is when we go out in public, um, we get beat up pretty regularly. And that's to be expected to some extent. I mean, Thomas Jefferson wrote that if you take on a public trust, uh, expect to be treated as public property, right? And what he meant by that was slavery. So, uh, to some extent, we should expect that. By the same token, the kind of abuse that many, uh, appointed officials are now receiving is well above and beyond the pale. So it's really important that our elected leadership provide an environment that's safe for people, at least within the confines of, of city hall to the greatest extent possible. I think part of that is also ensuring that people have the tools they need and talking with the staff, that you've got a great staff, by the way, I want to mention that. They were really kind to me when I met with them today. They were talking about providing a little bit more structure, you know, not having an administrator for two years, that the structure's gotten a little bit loose for folks. So they're looking for more structure, a little bit more guidance, uh, from their elected officials. But I do think this issue of safety and thinking about it in terms of safety, uh, is really important for staff and that we go above and beyond what's just required, um, um, for protected populations and that we make sure that, that government is a place that's safe. As you know, I'm elected, I'm a former elected official, I'm also, uh, a, a city administrator, so I've been on both sides of the table. What motivates us, elected officials and appointed officials, is the same thing, we want to do good work for our community. So that's really how you motivate staff, um, is ensuring that they are best able to do their best for their community. I'm sorry, that's a long-winded answer, but it's a great question.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome.
Uh, yes, good evening. And Jessica, it's not, I know people don't mind not seeing my face, but it says the video you've, uh, is to host my video, so I can't turn it on. But my question for you, uh, is how would you define performance metrics for township government?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you. Mr. Jerome, I've got a face that's perfect for radio, so. It, it really needs to be up, uh, to the elected officials as to how you best define those metrics. I mean, I'm pretty familiar with Baldrich principles and ISO nine thousand and one, although I'm not a real fan of Baldrich in, um, government. Uh, it, it's a little bit too quirky, but I do think there are other things that should be looked at, you know, return on investment particularly is important. What's your bond rating? How much money do you have in cash reserve? What's your, um, percentage of, of money that's going into staff as per, uh, as compared to other, um, townships of similar size and scope? What's your percentage that are going into project work? What's the percentage of grants that you're bringing in as compared to your overall budget? Those are the kind of metrics that I look at that, to me, are really important, particularly in the communities that I've worked in that were pretty economically depressed. Bringing in state and federal funds becomes a really important issue, uh, in low-growth communities. A little bit different for high-growth communities, but there's still other funds that you can tap into in order to try to keep your general fund and your general taxes as low as possible. Those are the metrics I look at.
Thank you. Trustee Noel. Good evening. Describe the role of a township administrator and how it works with the board of trustees.
Well, the, the board of trustees are basically, uh, in charge. They're, they're, they're the ones who are, you know, kind of the, the CEO of, uh, municipality where the administrator's the COO of the, um, township. So you have a little bit of a different structure there, um, where in, in many municipalities, you'll have a direct line between the administrator and the mayor, or in this, uh, um, case, the, the supervisor. So i- it's a little bit broader in scope, is my understanding in, in how things work, at least dozen of townships in Wisconsin.
Treasurer Palmer.
Describe your level of experience with finance and accounting, in particular for project planning.
Good, yeah, um, so I, I think, you know, the, the project work is really important, and my background's in planning. I've got a strong planning background. So one of the things I'll do when I come into a new organization, be it a nonprofit or municipality, is go through all the, the documents, right? What's the comprehensive plan say? Where are all the goals and objectives? What's the CIP say? What are the goals and objectives? What's the park and rec plan? And get all those goals and objectives up on the ball, on the wall, okay? So that everybody can see them and then start to prioritize those. And then by those, start looking at funding objectives, um, to get them against the timeframe, right? So what do you want to get funded this year? What do you want to get funded next year? What do you want to get funded in three years? And then start looking at, uh, what are the funding streams to be able to pay for those? So that's really where I look at project work and trying to bring in the funding to do it, and what can be manipulated, right? Things that you could fund this year might have to wait for a year depending upon what kind of grant dollars, uh, you can access, or what are the priorities? Because the priorities shift, right? So i- it's really a matter of looking at that, but that's where, where I really start. I try to make sure I've got a full command of the facts, if you will, when it comes to all the project work. I need to see all those projects up and on the wall so that it makes some, some level of sense to me and I can get my head around where the organization is trying to go.
Trustee Vogel.
So how would you handle a situation where you were given conflicting guidance from two board members?
Well, and it really depends on, on the issue, you know, if it's, uh, if it's a management issue or if it's a policy issue. If it's a policy question, hopefully it's not. Hopefully it's, uh, an operational issue that's fairly benign and easier to work through than policy questions. But yeah, I've had that on numerous occasions where you get conflicting stuff. And I think most importantly, it's getting the details, listening to what people are actually saying. There's a lot behind what people tell you, and you want to be able to get to those issues. Talk to the people individually. If I'm unable to reach a consensus or a line moving forward that's agreed upon, try to get them in the same room, or two or three people in the same room to talk about how do we want to move forward with this? And we deal with this, and we deal with this issue in government a lot. For instance, I've got that going on right now. Our marina manager shut down our fish cleaning station. Well, you shut it down because we close October fifteenth, uh, nine days from now, and, um, boy, there's some hoteliers who are really angry about that, and why the heck did we close that down? Well, because it's seven grand and we don't have it in the budget right now. So we'll have it next year, we can fix it next year. So we're going to get those, those kind of conflicts. What's important is that we listen to folks, that we give them the opportunity to speak their onions, so to say, and, um, you know, listen to what they have to say, explain to them the best way why we're moving forward, explain to them in logical terms the best way to move forward, and you can't always reach consensus, understanding that, um, at the end of the day. But yeah, we deal with those issues a lot.
Thank you. Trustee Corte.
What would be your process to identify and apply for grants?
Oh, it's a great question. Again, it goes back to really understanding what the goals and objectives are. So where I start is going through the active documents that are in our community. So again, all the goals and objectives, what's in the comprehensive plan, what's in the parking rec plan, what's in the business plan, uh, what's in the CIP? Get all of those up, okay? Those are your goals and objectives. Okay? And now if we can agree on that, that these are the things we wish to purchase and move forward with on the future, now it's a matter of lining up grants along with those needs. And, you know, strategically, which ones can you go after now, which ones can wait, which ones can't wait, um, and which ones line up with a funding cycle? Because these different grants are on different cycles. But every year, there should be several grants that go into Department of Natural Resources, there should be one that goes into rural development, there should be one that goes into CDGB every year, um, for some projects that, um, you know, are on that list. You also want to look at all the previous grants that you've written. You want to talk to other municipalities to see if they have a grants database that you can tackle. And then between that list of priorities and between your grants database, now you flesh out a grants calendar, and you do that for every department within the municipality. Now, at some point, you need to turn that over to the department heads, and the department heads need to have as part of their process every year, writing grants, so that, that's just not held by one person, that that's inculcated through the organization. One person can write about twelve grants a year. If you have it on all your department heads, you can write a hundred and twenty grants a year, and that's where you want to be.
Thank you. Clerk Flintoff.
How would you bring together a strong staff, an engaged community, and a talented board of trustees?
Yeah, great question. And I think, um, you know, as I'm, been listening to the, um, interviews today and as I've been reading and doing my research on SIO, you really need to engage in strategic planning, and that'll get you there. Now again, please take what I'm saying with a grain of salt. I'm looking at SIO through a keyhole. I can't see everything that you guys see, okay? So that's really important. But from what I see, some strategic planning will really bring, uh, um, your internal organization, your, uh, elected officials, and your public together around some common issues. Then do not, do not, do not try to accomplish the biggest and most valuable issues. Do the very small ones that are easy successes. Success breeds success. So really start with some small, easy wins that come out of your street, strategic plan, uh, and start implementing those first rather than the big, you know, kind of juicy issues that everybody wants to get to first. I mean, that, that's what I've implemented in other municipalities that I've been in and other organizations that I've been in, in order to get them turned around. A- as an example of that, and again, SIO doesn't fit well because you're a high-growth community compared with Kiwanis, which is a, a, a no-growth community. But when I came to Kiwanis, they had burned through all their financial reserves and were in a negative fund balance. And they were running on a line of credit loan in order to make payroll. That's how bad the fight is. Yeah, exactly, wow. But the board was committed, um, to turning it around. And, um, there, there were very many different opinions as to how to do that. There were some board members who said, well, we're going to cut our way to prosperity. There were other board members who disagreed with that. But getting through the strategic planning process pretty much got the board and the staff, pretty much, not a hundred percent, but pretty much got everybody on the same page.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hathaway.
Describe your ability to multitask and to follow through on complicated issues.
Yeah, it's a great question because in this, in these positions, you're multitasking all the time. You know, I, I, I have an agenda that I put through. I'm a great fan of to-do lists, I got them going all the time. And then usually by about ten o'clock, I can throw it out the window because other things have happened in the meantime. So you have to prepare for that. But still, overall, it goes back to this, having, having these, um, goals and objectives up on the wall and trying to stay focused on that, having them as part of your calendar so they come up every day, having them as part of your agenda in your staff meetings and in your board meeting, what are the things that we're focused on? So that we try to keep our eyes on the prize here. But, you know, multitasking is always a part, um, of what we're doing to get those goals and objectives complete.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome.
How do you adjust your communication style for different audiences?
Yeah, I'm, and that's, that's a really interesting question because, you know, part of what I did when I worked at, uh, Footh, uh, was I spoke out in communities all the time. Engineers, I, I, I worked for an engineering firm, and engineers weren't great public communicators. They would often get into the weeds on technical details, so they would bring me oftentimes. And I, I think what it is, is it's trying to take, um, you know, complex issues and try to keep them as simple as possible through storytelling and examples. People love that. So one of the things we worked on in Kiwanis and, and one of the goals of our board was to really work on property maintenance, making sure we were cleaning up our act. How do we do that? Again, simple stories. Why should I invest in you if you won't invest in yourself? Why should I invest in Kiwanis if Kiwanis doesn't look worthy of investment? The old Tom Joad line, don't look none too prosperous to me, right? Simple stories. You know, this is like what our grandfather taught us, you keep the campsite cleaner than you found it. And that's really what I try to do is avoid, you know, getting into the weeds, avoid getting into complex issues, and trying to boil issues down, uh, to the simplest terms that you can. And I don't like the term simplest because it makes it sound like you're patting people on the head. That's not what it is. It's really trying to convey some very complex, and government's pretty complex, and trying to keep it, um, in, in a way that people can relate to, that makes sense for all of us. So you really need to know your audience, um, number one, I think that's really important. But I also think it's important that you allow them to speak, because the audience matters. So for instance, if I've got a twenty-minute agenda with a group of business people, it will take an hour with educators. That same agenda, okay? Because educators are extremely smart people and they can chew around the edges of a lot of stuff. Doesn't change my message much, but it changes my approach to let people talk more. Particular, and again, I can say this because my father was an educator, my mother's an educator, my wife's an educator, I'm not picking on educators, but you can't have a short meeting with very smart people. You need to put some more time and space in there so that they can speak and discuss the various issues. So that's really how I change the message, not so much the message itself, but what's the structure of the meeting and how do you structure it for your audience? It's a great question.
Trustee Noel. How would you get involved and engaged with the new community?
Yeah, that's also another great question. Again, I think strategic planning will help get you there. I think getting the community involved in a strategic planning process where you're looking at all your previous goals and objectives, seeing what's still important there. And again, it doesn't have to be involved if the board doesn't think it needs to be. It can be, you know, rather short and sweet. But, um, I think that's a way to get people involved is through a strategic planning process. You also want to get the business community involved. I think that's really important that you have business support. How I was able to do that in Kiwanis was we did a slippage study. Now, again, it depends on what you call it, everybody calls it something different. But to use, uh, again, a simplistic term, you look at all the goods and products and services that are purchased in Kiwanis, and you get a number. And then you look at all the goods and products and services that are purchased by Kiwanisans, you get a much bigger number. And the gap between those two is what's slipping out of your community and slippage study. And what that did was greatly reduced the risk for businesses in terms of what kind of businesses could they start up. Because the, the community already did the work. We did that part, as part of a comprehensive planning process. The community gave us all their goals and objectives, really good stuff, but we wanted to validate it in the marketplace. Because the community says, well, we'd really like to have an old Woolworth five-and-dime back in our community. That sounds fine, but we'll actually fly in the marketplace, was what we wanted to get to. That also gave us the buy-in of the business community.
Thank you. Treasurer Palmer.
What types of projects have you worked on in the past and what were the outcomes they brought about?
Well, let me talk about the, the kind of latest, greatest one I was involved in, which was the demolition of the Marquette School Brownfield site. Toxins that were in it, you're thinking of school, what toxins can be in there? Asbestos, it was loaded with asbestos and it was loaded with lead paint. So getting rid of those things out of the building was really a problem because the building had sat vacant for twenty years, so there were holes in the roof. We then had the contractor who bid it, who underbid it, thought that it was designed a certain way when he actually got into the building. The whole building just pancaked and we were left with an entire site that was contaminated, so the contractor walked off the job. He wanted to double his rate. We didn't have the money and the grants to do that. So we were able to bring that to a successful termination without having to go through a lawsuit and everything else. We cleaned that site up using our own workers and using our own workforce, contracting out some excavating work and landfilling work. And then we tiffed that whole area. So we're currently looking at several housing developments that'll be on there. And we're looking at a hotel development on another site as part of that mixed-use tiff. So that was a pretty successful project. That's just one of them. Another project I was really involved with, which I think might be Jermaine for SIO, is a contaminated site in Ashland. We had an old coal tar plant. What that is, is, you know, about a hundred years ago, they used to crush coal, mix it with kerosene, and that would create essentially gas. And that gas was used to heat people's homes and light the streetlights and everything else. The byproduct of that is coal tar or what we used, we used to paint fence posts with, Freasol. And that was a big site that we had in Ashland, and cleaning up and remediating that site took many, many years. That project started before I was mayor and it concluded after I was mayor, but I spent a lot of time on it.
Thank you. Trustee Vogel.
So how would you stay up to date with best practices in local government?
Now, it's another great question. There's several ways that I try to do that. One is I'm, I'm involved in schools, so I get a lot from University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee. Get a lot of updates there from my colleagues. I've involved in several writing groups and several organizations on campus that I'm involved with. I'm also involved with the Wisconsin City Managers Association. I'm involved with the Wisconsin League of Municipalities and ICMA. So I receive a lot of emails and documents and go to trainings and conferences that they hold there. So that's really the way I try to stay up to date. And I think, again, it's just being intellectually curious about one's career, you know?
Thank you. Trustee Corto. What is your experience preparing, reviewing, and executing contracts?
Oh, yeah, I've had a lot of that because so much of what we do is contract-based, you know? Either through project work, lining up, you know, engineers, lining up lawyers, lining up excavators or other, other pieces of the project which you need to get. So the latest one is a redevelopment project that we're working on called Fisherman's Point here in town, where we had to contract with some specific water issues. We have to do what's called a hydraulic and hydrology study to make sure that if we fill in a piece of the river, we're not going to allow the river to back up. So reading through the contracts, ensuring that there's proper language in there, ensuring that the city, to the greatest extent, is covered, you know, that there, that, that there's a good workflow. Again, being a planner, I think in terms of a Gantt chart, right, kind of down the X axis, what are all the project components along the Y axis, what's the time and when's it all going to get done? So I try to make sure there's a Gantt chart that's involved with every one of these contracts that are going to have deliverables to them or that are time-sensitive. And then, you know, trying to keep the city in best possible in a, in a position where it isn't, has any kind of liability. So ensuring that the contractor has the proper insurance, that they provide a binder to the city showing that the city's covered. And then finally, of course, there's always a meeting where I sit down with the mayor, what are the key points the mayor wants in the contract? And then once I get that fleshed out, I send it over to the lawyer for final legal review.
Clerk Flintoff.
If you were selected as the township administrator, what would the first ninety days look like?
Yeah, again, I think the first thing is, is read, read, read. Get into all of the previous documents and current documents that, that SIO has so that I have a full command of the facts as to what's, what's planned out for the next ten years. Most CIPs are only five years. I want to take a look at ten years out. To me, ten years is more realistic. So now I have a handle on what are we looking at in the future. When I did that in Kiwanee, our, our elected officials were stunned that, you know, we had well over fifty million in upcoming needs. How are we going to fund this? That's now we have a command of the facts as to where we're going. So to, to me, actually having a kind of handle on what do we have internally in the organization? What are our goals? What are our objectives? What's in the CIP? What's in the comprehensive plan? What's in the parking rec plan? What are any other plans that we have? Then it's a matter of one-on-ones, one-on-ones with every staff member, one-on-one with every board member, so that I understand kind of what their goals and what their objectives are. And as part of that, you keep a little cheat sheet, you know, you keep your notes with you. What are the key business people I have to meet in the community? And the board and the staff will tell me that. Then who are the leaders who don't have position? And you know what I mean, the, the people who are real leaders in the community, but they don't have a title. But they can make stuff shake and they can make stuff happen in the community. So meet with all of those people. At the end of three months of that, you'll have a good outline of a plan. You then bring that before the board to validate that. Does this make sense? Is this where we need to be going forward? Are these the things that we need to be working on? And then it's a matter of, again, going through that strategic planning process with the board and the community, get consensus as to what's important. And that's a hard thing to do. That's a really hard thing to do. And again, because what I can tell you from past experience is working on the small successes first are what's going to build success in the future rather than the big things that everybody wants right now and will require tons of effort and a year or two out before you see success. So getting those, those priorities are really, really important, you know? And it's hard to convince the public of that, you know? Are the job descriptions important? Boy, they're critical. But trying to convince the public that having a, a good job description is important is not always an easy sell. So it's really trying to develop consensus amongst the group as to what should be in that strategic plan.
Thank you. Supervisor Hathaway.
Please describe your experience partnering with outside consultants to ensure effective service delivery.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you, you have to, particularly in, you know, in, in government. We don't have the capacity to have everything under our roof, so you're, you're contracting all the time. One of the new things we created here in Kiwanee was contracting with county government. We have the county government delivering our IT services and we have the county providing us with CPA services because we don't have a CPA on staff, we don't have a techy on staff. And we were able to try to do that. Our, our ambulance service, our, our fire service is, you know, regional and we have multi-jurisdictional agreements all over the place with those. But the other thing with the private sector is really the big one is engineering. We, we subcontract with engineers, we subcontract, I subcontract with a lawyer, with our assessor and kind of other services there. But the, the probably the most expensive one is our engineering firm because we have so many projects in the works that we've got going and ensuring that they can deliver the services that we need. Again, like the engineers can't always get the services under their roof too, so they have to partner with others.
Thank you. Trustee Jerome.
What is your experience with applying best practices for improvements in business processes and workflows?
Yeah, again, some of this stuff, you know, goes back to Baldridge and SPC and, you know, ICO and some other stuff. That doesn't work well with government. I can tell you what I use and what works for me and which, you know, over the years, I've kind of developed. I'm not a huge fan of annual evaluations, but I understand they're, they're necessary. But what I try to do is do an evaluation for every department head that's thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, hundred and eighty, and three sixty. And that we visit that regular. The goals and objectives in there are laid out mutually and they can shift. It's not like if they don't meet it, there's, there's going to be a pay increase or something tied to that, although you certainly can. That will get you to a performance-based personnel system eventually. And that's where it comes from, by the way. Comes from a performance-based personnel system that I was able to put in place when I was at a nonprofit national Wisconsin. At any rate, so that thirty, sixty, ninety days tends to work really well, allowing a lot of meetings with the department heads to ensure that they're staying up on their goals and I'm staying up on my goals and we're moving forward. It also allows for no surprises because if something isn't going to work, we can make moves, movements in there. Because we were too ambitious or something else happened, another project or another priority came in. So I really enjoy that best, and I find that to be most successful with regard to the personnel function and being able to kind of move projects forward.
Thank you. Trustee Noel.
What challenges do you see the township facing in the coming years?
Yeah, and you've got several of them that are before you. So, I mean, take, take, take these as, as you will. Certainly managing growth is, is something that you're dealing with. So budget and finance is, is a critical issue. Which umbrella you wish to put these under is up to you. Budget and finance, how are you going to plan for that growth? How are you going to take care of your infrastructure needs? How are you going to take care of the dioxide problem that you have? Climate change is another big one that we're dealing with. And again, I, I do think there is something happening right now politically where we're getting Washington-style politics down to the local level. We need to be mindful of that and try to keep that the heck away from local government. I mean, one of the things that local government's always been very good at, because we are nonpartisan, is not having to deal with this, you know, Republican-Democrat fights that get involved. And we can focus in, because I don't know how a Republican picks up garbage differently than Democrat. If somebody would explain that to me, I'd sure like to know. But it's really important that we start paying attention to those kind of issues. So those are kind of the big ones. Budget and finance around managing growth, the dioxide issue that you're dealing with, you know, some of the legacy costs that are out there. But workforce development, I think, is also an issue that we're starting to see. At least here in Wisconsin, we're starting to see a lot of public administrators just leaving altogether and going into the private sector, into the nonprofit sector, so that they don't have to deal with kind of the, the anger issues, if you will, that we're dealing with.
Thank you. Treasurer Palmer.
How would you calm down a contentious situation?
Yeah, the first thing is, is, is to approach it calmly, you know, and listen. So do as much as you can to kind of lower the temperature on the issue. And you deal with that all the time. I mean, there's always someone who, out there, you know, who comes in who's upset about something. But most importantly, it's listening to what they have to say. And nine times out of ten, what I've found is there's some kind of issue behind their complaint. There's something to it, right? What it is, you don't necessarily know. So for instance, one of the things we dealt with, and this is many, many years ago, when I was dealing with plant closures. Why would workers get so upset over losing their job? It's an abandonment issue. They've been abandoned by their employer. They were promised something and it was denied to them. So to be able to get that out and address those, I mean, think about the first time you leave a baby alone. Holy smokes, it's traumatic as all get out. And that's what people are dealing with. And oftentimes, when people deal with government, they're not on their best, so we have to be. And it's really important that when people are upset, that we try to listen, make sure we hear what their issues are and that we're honest brokers of government services. That, to me, is the most important thing. I don't always tell people what they want to hear, but I tell them the truth. And I think they'll walk away from a meeting, even though I haven't necessarily provided them with what they want to hear. They know they haven't been lied to. And that's really, really important right now. I think more important than it's been in a long time, that people feel that they're being dealt with fairly, they're being dealt with equitably, even if you don't give them the answer that they necessarily want to hear.
We have one final question. Trustee Vogel.
So can you describe your experience facilitating strategic planning discussions?
Oh, yeah. And, and again, I, you know, did that, when, let me explain it to you this way. When I came to Ashland as the mayor, I had been studying sustainable practices about, oh, five, six years before I became mayor. I came to the sustainability movement not because I'm an environmentalist. I want to make that clear. That makes me really rare for someone who's involved in the sustainability movement because most people come to the sustainability movement as an environmentalist. Now, one of the things I told you I've been working on is trying to bring together the disciplines, if you will, picture a Venn diagram, of workforce development, community development, and economic development. And when those three intersect, you really can create growth in the community. That's really what I was working on. So when I saw the triple bottom line of people, plant, and profits, trying to bring together those three disciplines, I bought into sustainability right now, okay? So when I became mayor of the city of Ashland, they were in dire need of strategic planning. We wrote one of the first comprehensive plans that were written in the natural step framework. The natural step framework was written by Chugger and Latte and Sarah James. It came out from Dr. Enrique Robert. We brought all three of them to our community to train our community. We had over a hundred and thirty people involved in developing our comprehensive plan, so there was a lot of community support behind it. Why did I write it that way? Because it's a blue-water strategy. Now, if anybody's in marketing, what blue-water strategy means is you're swimming in blue water. You're the only one in it. A red-water strategy is when you're fighting with all the sharks and everybody else. So when I would sit down with the governor and say, Governor, I need three million dollars for sidewalks because I want to be a walkable and sustainable community, because we want to try to reduce our carbon footprint, I got three million dollars. Nobody else got it. Because every other mayor in the state went to the governor and said, I need three million dollars. Why? Public safety, public safety, public safety, public safety. I was in a blue-water strategy. So, yeah, I was, I was, I'm very familiar with, with how to plan. What's important is what kind of planning process do you need? What I needed in Ashland was a whole new methodology of planning. So we had a very, very involved process and a very expensive process in order to create that. We got a lot of people involved. It took a long time. It took two years to get through that planning process. But the outcomes allowed us to bring in sixteen point eight million in state and federal funding, which we desperately needed to jumpstart our economic growth in our community. You know, because of the growth you have in SIO, you're probably going to look for something that's a lot more pared down than that. You don't need something that elaborate. You might not need a blue-water strategy to move forward on. But that's really kind of my background. And I did that for FOLF where I did comprehensive plans for townships and counties and cities all over the Middle West. Some were in a sustainable framework, some weren't. Some were just down-and-dirty strategic plans in order to get a board kind of on some new footing. So it really depends on what are the, what are the outcomes you're looking for. Now, again, don't drive the outcomes. Don't worry about the outcomes. If you worry about the process, you'll have the kind of outcomes that you need. So what are the outcomes that you're looking for in general terms, not specific terms? But what are the outcomes? And then design a process to do that. And that kind of goes back to the question that was asked earlier about, you know, how, how do you view change in an organization? And how do you bring about change? Understand, you know, I take a systems approach to things. You cannot build boats in an automobile plant. Everything in that plant, from top to bottom, the engineering, the equipment, everything is designed to build automobiles. You can't build boats in there. The outcomes you're receiving in the township of SIO are there by design, whether they, whether they were intentional or not. The systems that are in place get the outcomes that you want. So you have to change the system if you want to change the outcomes. So really, to tear that apart and really look at what do you want in terms of outcomes, in general terms, not in specific terms, is an important way to start your planning process. Sorry for that long-winded answer, but it's a great question.
All right. Thank you, Fred. We have about five minutes. We'll turn it over to you for any questions that you have of the board.
Well, I think the big question I have, and I don't know that the boards thought this through, but it would be a question that I have. One of the things, I talked about safety, right, and the importance of creating One of the things, I talked about safety, right, and the importance of creating a safe environment. So, one of the things I'll always do with department heads is, one of our first meetings, is we talk about what's going to happen when we disagree. And we talk about that in cold blood, okay, rather than later when it's in hot blood, okay? So, if I'm going to have a disagreement with my public works director, that public works director wants ABC, and I want XYZ, how are we going to resolve that conflict and figure that out now before the conflict comes? Because that's going to happen. If you hire passionate people, you're going to have passionate disagreements, right? But what's most important is the relationship with my public works director, not the issue at hand, but the relationship. How do we preserve that relationship for the long term, okay? So, maybe we go before the plan commission with our, maybe we go before the public works committee. Maybe we go before the full board. I don't know what's best, but we'll hammer that out with the department heads, and I have that agreement with all the department heads to preserve our relationship. What's the relationship with the process with the board? Because when I'm looking at your ordinance, is you still have a town manager in there. So, the question you asked about what happens if two board members disagree? Who do I go to for day-to-day supervision? Now, I assume that's the supervisor, but maybe that assumption's wrong. That needs to be hammered out and be in a document somewhere. So, has the board thought about that at all, as to how that kind of day-to-day management, how disagreements are going to be handled? Because it's going to happen, right? How is that going to be handled, is my question. Now, I realize that's a long-winded question. You might not have an answer today. But that's certainly one of the questions I have in kind of looking at your current ordinance, the change that you're making in structure, and how's that going to be handled so that we all feel safe?
That's a very good question.
Good.
I don't think that we have a clear answer to that. I think we definitely would benefit from sort of giving some thought to how to have disagreements and maintain the good working relationships.
Exactly, exactly. Well, and again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. It's just one of the things that I think is going to happen, right? So, let's try to figure out a way to deal with that now when there's board members who do disagree, and they're coming to the administrator with conflicting messages. Who wins? Okay? Because again, to me, what the important thing is preserving a relationship, not the issue that's at hand. Because there'll be a new issue, you know? So, anyway, give some thought to that. Outside of that, I heard some of the answers that, you know, some of the other candidates asked about timing and other stuff. So, that was kind of the only question that I had that was kind of out there and kind of poignant for me.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks for staying up so late. I sure do appreciate it. If you have any question, any time, please do give me a call.
This is early for us.
Yeah, this is nothing. Thank you very much, Fred.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for participating. I think, Jennifer, unless you have something more to say for us, I think Amy sent out a message sort of explaining what the next steps are in terms of the process, sort of your firm pulling together the, all the data from the different parts of this process, all the different sources, and sort of presenting it back in a format that is also, she acknowledged something that's public. And the next step where we deliberate would be at our next regular meeting on the 12th. We'll have to make some time on the agenda for that. So, unless you have something more to say, I think it's time for us to turn to public comment.
Are there any interested members of the public? I see we've got a few people online here. And before somebody raises their hand, I also just want to thank Jennifer for her facilitating all of those questions and all the work you and your colleagues have been doing. So, thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Is anybody interested in speaking? I see no Zoom hands.
Let's just give it a minute just to make sure. And people are welcome to provide input via the township's website in terms of their thoughts on the different candidates. If there are no public comments, in that case, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Moved by trustee Jerome?
Support.
Support by Palmer, by treasurer Palmer? Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. 9:21.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.